I would like to call to order the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, April 18, 2018, at 6:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Katharina Barbie.
Here.
Vicky Buckley.
Yeah.
David Castro.
Here.
Matthew Kroll. Deborah Neer. Jerry Wright.
Here.
Chair Christina Atherton. We have a quorum.
Thank you.
My apologies. I couldn't hear what you said.
Moving on to...
Tell us what you said.
Moving on to the next item is approval of the agenda. I would like to ask the members of the commission if there are any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda.
No.
Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Barbie and second by Wright. Could I have... Those who are in favor, say aye.
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 Same sign for those opposed. So we have an agenda. Moving on to the third item, approval of minutes. We have in front of us the March 21st, 2018 minutes. I would like to hear if there are any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Buckley and second by Barbie. Can I hear all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is public participation. This is a good time for anyone wishing to speak on the record on items that are not on the agenda. I would entertain those. So, moving on to the next item, all business. We are continuing a public hearing on a petition by Stefan Woreminski, applicant and Blackhawk Road LLC owner, to amend Plan Development Ordinance Number 2017-028 to amend... to eliminate, I'm sorry, the requirement of a commercial kitchen and amend the final plans regarding the parking lot, handicap accessibility, and landscaping on the Sigma New Fraternity located at 1114 Blackhawk Road. And I think the petitioner is here. I would appreciate if you can state your name and address. And I want to make a note for the record that this public hearing started about 6:02 this afternoon.
All right. My name's Stefan Woreminski, and I'm actually the Alumni Housing Association President for the Sigma New Fraternity at 1114 Blackhawk Road in DeKalb. I was an active member, actually, of this chapter as well as a collegiate. And before I go into the actual business at hand here, I do want to just make a little bit of announcement as far as something really great that happened at the property. Not only did we light it up like a Christmas tree, but we also put up really great video surveillance system. And Detective Sunny Strite of the DeKalb Police has actually told me that it's the best. And there was actually an armed robbery on the 28th of February. And with our camera system, we were actually able to catch the assailant running away from the scene of the crime through our parking lot and, go figure, into his apartment building on the adjacent street. And an arrest was made later that day for this individual. So I just want to, you know, say how cool that was, just to work with Detective Strite there and be able to provide that to that area. I think it's going to be a valuable asset to not only the DeKalb Police, but the Greek community as a whole, and hopefully cut down on crime in that area. Now, to the business at hand, we are looking to amend the site plan. As you can see here, when we... This is actually the original site plan with the original parking lot. That parking lot was actually changed... Let's see if the next one shows it. Yeah. That parking lot was actually changed to be the entire side of that property. And we went from about 20 spaces to 43 spaces, which is one of the largest parking lots for any Greek organization. It's the closest one-to-one ratio of anyone. Nobody else comes even close to that. What we've done here is we've amended the plan slightly to have the handicap parking spots changed from basically the middle of the building to the north side of the property. What that allowed us to do was make a faster accessible route for any individual parking there. And we've actually installed a sidewalk from that area all the way around to the front door. And the front door area was changed to a ramp, all concrete, obviously. So it was nice and continuous, so there were no breaks in the concrete. So it became accessible at that point. So all that we need to do at that point is restripe the old spots. We just have to basically change them out so that everything is reflected as this plan. I already contacted Royer Paving to have that done. And as soon as we're not getting three inches of snow in the end of April, hopefully we'll be able to get that done. And then, in addition, when we changed the parking lot, we actually had to chop down two trees to accomplish that. We had to center up the aisles just to make that parking lot work for us. And what we're amending here is the two spaces, basically to the east of the parking lot in those parkways. They're vacant at this point, so we're wanting to put in blaze maple trees, autumn blaze maple trees, in those areas. In addition, at the front of the property, the tree that is on the corner of Blackhawk and Kimberly in the parkway again is dead. So what we came up with with Mr. Dan Olson is basically having Public Works come out and remove that tree. And we would, at that point, plant another autumn blaze maple there. These trees are going to be larger trees already, definitely larger than anything I'm sure the city would plant in the parkway as, you know, a tree that would replace a dead one. So I think this works out best for everyone because we're basically replacing the trees that we had cut down in addition to the extra tree without putting any new trees on the property and cluttering the facade of the building itself. And then, moving on to the actual kitchen plan, I think this is the amended plan. Sorry, it's a little small there. So basically, what we had done was we had gotten all the guys together and said, "There's a couple options of what you can do with food." And we gave them the option of having something like campus cooks come in and, you know, cook them meals. But the guys really didn't like the fact that campus cooks would only be there five days a week. They really didn't like the added cost of living for them. And one of the best things for them that they wanted was to have, basically, university meal plans. The university cafeterias are open on the weekends, so they'd still have that accessibility. So they're paying for something that they can use seven days a week versus five days a week. That being said, if we're not having a professional cook in the house, there's really no reason for a commercial kitchen, especially considering when we got the property, it was... the kitchen itself was empty. There wasn't anything in there. Additionally, you know, the vent hood that was in there is no longer to safety code. So that would all have to be replaced at great expense. And that was the biggest thing that we were looking at, was the expense of putting in a full commercial kitchen, especially for something that's not going to be used because the gentlemen opted for university meal plans. So basically, what we did was we were able to put in a triple basin sink. It's a commercial stainless sink, in addition to a handwashing sink just adjacent to it. It does have a grease trap separator in there as well. And what we've provided for is basically NSF-certified stainless steel, you know, preparation surfaces, basically, for the guys, so that they can bring meals down, like microwaveable meals or whatever they bring back from the dormitories, so they can heat it up. And there's microwaves down there, toaster oven, in addition to a... one of those infrared cooktops for them, so they can prepare anything that they would like without, you know, actually having a full commercial stove for 45 collegiate men to use at their beck and call. So much better option, we thought, for the guys. And that's why we were wanting to amend it to this current plan. And I think that basically covers everything. The actual dumpster enclosure just needs to be changed on the site plan. Per the recommendation of Royer Paving, we put it on the opposite side of the parking lot because that was where the existing parking lot had been. And he said it was just better to put it there just so that the parking lot didn't get ripped up in the new area by the garbage truck. So make our parking lot last a little bit longer, hopefully. So that was the reason for the change.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Stay around because questions may come. Not now. I was wondering if the city wants to make a presentation, and then we can ask questions.
Yeah, you have a staff report in your packets. Again, the applicant went over well with the proposed changes. About a year ago, the city approved a rezoning to Plan Development to allow the reestablishment of the fraternity as up to 45 residents. They started moving in towards the end of the year. They did receive a temp CO or certificate of occupancy, included a couple provisions. One was the adding an accessible lift, and another was replacing all the doors, and the third was submitting a zoning application to eliminate the commercial kitchen. We got the zoning application in January. We've had a couple continued hearings while they were working on the other items. The accessible lift, I understand, has been in the building. And I think the applicant indicated that there's inspection by the state scheduled for the end of the month here.
Correct. On the 26th, the lift company just got a published report from the state as far as that being the inspection date, so.
So that's been installed, and the inspection's coming up, and all the doors have been replaced and inspected by the city. So all those items have gone forward, so we're ready for the recommendation by the commission. Again, with the commercial kitchen, as noted by the applicant, there was requirements in the development agreement requiring the commercial kitchen. The residents have opted for the student plan through the university, so there's not a need for the commercial kitchen. So I did list in the report kind of the items, and they're reflected on the plans, showing what the differences are. Basically, with the commercial kitchen, you have the shelving, the hood system, fire suppression, the ten burner range with ovens. That's not part of it now. That wasn't installed. That's what they're proposing to amend. And just to have the basic kitchen in there with the items that the applicant mentioned, with the microwave oven, fridge, freezer, toaster oven, the sinks, work tables, et cetera. So that's what the plan reflects, so. The amended... So another thing we want to do is get the plan updated, amended to what the work that's gone out there. Of course, since the approval and the work that's gone out, there's been a few changes. As mentioned, the parking handicap spaces moved to the north. That all reflected the change in the handicapped accessibility, moving from the north end to the west side of the building. So they built the sidewalk and handicap ramp accessible into the building. It's been built. The handicap space has been put in. And then, the landscaping there was shown on the plans. There's four trees that were proposed, two ornamental and two shade trees, and then shrubs where the entrances are into Kimberly and to Edgbrook. And they've installed the shrubs. There was a couple shade trees that were moved because of that. And then, working with the applicant, trying to... And the four trees on the front were not installed yet, namely because of the new sidewalk location. And working with the applicant recently, trying to get the... Where should these four plants be put that's most beneficial to the site? Not just maybe thrown on a plan, but let's take a look at it closely. So what we've agreed to, and there's a revised sample motion in front of you on your dais showing the revised motion. The only item that changed was item 1A in the trees, so. We also wanted to... The area to the east is 912 Edgbrook. That's the apartment building the city owns, bought last year. And we wanted to increase the visibility between that. And actually, our Public Works Department's gone out there very recently to trim that off. There's still some additional trimming of the trees and some bushes out there that could help that, but that's been cleared up quite a bit. Our police department wanted to get better visibility between those two properties. So what we agreed to with the applicant and for the commission's consideration is the addition of three shade trees on the site, including the right-of-way. And as I indicated, there's some areas in the right-of-way where we could add those with the approval of the Public Works. And that would be per the approval of the Community Development Director. So three shade trees, a two-and-a-half-inch minimum caliper instead of the two ornamental and two shade trees on the western part of the property. So that works the best, that they're put where that's going to be most beneficial to the city. And just adding... So these will be changes to the plan that we'll want to see before the council acts on the ordinance. And then, they'll make the changes out there. Also, just a note on the plan indicating the vegetation on that east line will be reviewed... Excuse me. Trimmed out to increase the visibility. Get the dumpster... There's a dumpster on the east parking aisle. Let's get that shown on the plan, where it's at. The revised kitchen plan as shown on the screen that was in your packets, that's approved, and that's Exhibit B. And then, the two handicap spaces at the midpoint, those need to be restripped to regular spaces, and that's to be conditioned upon final CO being issued by the city. So that's our recommendations. Is there any questions? We certainly be happy to answer those.
I wonder if any other members of the public want to make comments? If not, commissioners are free to ask questions. I do have questions. I do have questions. I have two questions. And whoever wants to answer my questions is free. This looks generally good to me. I have a curiosity. On page two of the packet, it talks about the inspection from the state fire marshal. Our decisions, actions here have no implications on that. Is that a fair statement? The inspection by the fire marshal, by the state fire marshal?
Yeah.
So our decisions here are absolutely unrelated.
Correct. Right. That's required by law to have that inspected by the state fire marshal.
Correct. The second question that I have is the... I mean, I look at the list of things for the commercial kitchen versus the agreed-upon kitchen, and I think that the big missing item is that stove.
Correct.
So what happens? I'm just... This is a curiosity of mine. What happens if here comes a member of the fraternity and, I don't know, found a stove on the sidewalk or some other street they're going to throw it away, and then he brings it into the facility? What happens?
The... Well, first and foremost, he won't be able to even hook it up because the actual line has been, not only has a new shut-off valve on it, but it also has a stop cap on it. So...
That's good.
Yeah. He's not going to be able to even install it.
That's good.
If he decided to do something as dumb as that. Additionally, we also partner with Greco Consulting Partners, which Kevin Kedzie is a partner, and also Glenn Roby. Kevin walks through the property on a weekly basis. He gives reports to not only I, but also the property owner, and just gives a status of the cleanliness of the property and just basically a status update of everything in the building. So if they were so dumb to even bring it in the building, it would be caught fairly quickly and told to be thrown back away.
Just a note, from the city's standpoint, we do annual inspections, too, of the rooming houses, Greek housing, and that would probably be caught, something like that.
Very good.
Inspection.
I'm sure Lieutenant Lynch would see that quite quickly.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any other comments, questions from fellow commissioners? No? If not, then I will note that it is 6:19, and I'm going to close the public hearing. I was wondering if there are any other comments, questions from members of the commission? If not, I will be happy to entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Sample motions on the handout.
Oh, I have to read them. I'm trying to set that. Because we don't have the commissioner here who usually reads.
I know.
And this one is long.
Your words are substituted.
Well, yeah. And I was already called out for my accent. So based upon the submitted petition and testimony presented, I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward its findings of fact and recommend to the City Council approval of an amendment to Plan Development Ordinance Number 2017-28 to eliminate the requirements for a commercial kitchen and amend the final plan regarding the parking lot, handicap accessibility, and landscaping at the Sigma New Fraternity located at 1114 Blackhawk Road. As indicated on the site plan, landscape plan dated 10/30/2017, prepared by Roman T. Holovka, architect, and shown as Exhibit A, subject to the following condition. First, the site plan-landscape plan dated 10/30/17 be revised to show A, the addition of three shade trees, two-and-a-half-inch minimum, on the site, including the row, per the approval of the Community Development Director. B, a note indicating the existing line of vegetation along the east side of the site adjacent to 912 Edgbrook Drive be trimmed back to increase visibility per the approval of the Community Development Director. C, the existing dumpster along the east aisle of the parking lot. Two, the revised kitchen plan is approved as shown on Exhibit B. Three, the two existing handicap spaces in the midpoint of the west parking aisle adjacent to building be restripped to regular spaces prior to a final occupancy permit being issued for the building. Second.
Thank you very much. Motion by Barbie and second by Buckley. Could I have a roll call, please?
Katharina Barbie.
Yes.
Vicky Buckley.
Yes.
David Castro.
Yes.
Matthew Kroll. Deborah Neer. Jerry Wright.
Yes.
Chair Christina Atherton. Motion carried.
Thank you very much. And thank you. Much appreciated. So we move on to item F on our agenda, new business. We're opening a public hearing on a petition by the City of DeKalb as applicant and Ken Straman, TSAPPA Associates LLC, and David M. Jacobson as owners for approval of an amendment to Ordinance 96-33 to add permitted and special uses to the property located at 850, 890, and 930 Pappas Drive, which is Zone PDC Plan Development Commercial District. Mr. Olson.
Thank you, Chairman. You have a staff report in your packets. It's a proposed amendment to an ordinance approved in 1996 that covered the three commercial properties that you see in the aerial there, 850, 890, 930 Pappas Drive. 850 includes Jimmy John's and Laundromat. 890 is a Luca Loz restaurant. 930 is a Rosati's restaurant. The ordinance back in 1996, when it was approved, also included the multifamily units to the west there. But for the commercial area, did not... The ordinance back then did not list specific permitted or special uses that would be allowed there. It's presumed in the past that the city just looked at their three commercial districts to determine what uses would be permitted or special. So we wanted to clean that up. There was actually a request for a special use in one of the buildings that's currently special use in our general commercial district. And that kind of started the review of the ordinance and found that there was no list. So... And there was differences between the general commercial and light commercial districts and what uses are permitted and special. So we wanted to make that clear. So since the ordinance wasn't... The city approved in 96 wasn't clear, the city initiated the petition, we're the petitioner, to amend that and worked with the three owners of the property on that list of permitted and special uses. Also included was a zoning map for that area. And as you can see, the addresses are on the parcels there. So this is the southeast corner of Hillcrest and Annie Glynn, southwest corner. And is the predominant commercial zoning in the area is light commercial. The 7-Eleven, the Britoville across the street are the only two general commercial districts. But the other commercial areas up on Hillcrest and Blackhawk are light commercial. So we use that district as kind of the basis for our list of permitted and special uses. And there's an Exhibit A that lists all those. So in developing that list, again, we closely filed that LC district. There was a few uses that we removed that are likely based on the size of the lot, configuration of the buildings, are not going to be able to locate there, such as hotels, public utility facilities, theaters, car washes, gas stations. Medical clinics is listed as a permitted use, although it's a special use in light commercial district. Discussion so far on the Annie Glynn North Plan have indicated that use a medical clinic may be a use that's needed out in that area, so we've added that as a permitted use. Uses related to daycare centers, which is a listed permitted use. So we wanted to capture some uses similar to that, preschools, learning centers, and after-school facilities. That was also added as permitted uses there. Again, the owners of the three properties have reviewed and approved the list. All the existing uses in the building are listed as permitted uses. The Jimmy John's does have a drive-through, which was approved via a different restaurant in 2004. So there's no non-conforming situations created with this use list being approved for these. So we're not creating any non-conforming situations. So staff would recommend approval. That makes the amendments make it clear going forward what uses will be allowed and what uses require the special use permit. So it gives clear direction to the owners and the future businesses of what's allowed We also... Part of the motion, the sample motion there is, of course, the amendment to the ordinance to add that list per Exhibit A. And also add language that the light commercial district regulations in the current UDO will be used if other parts of the ordinance don't cover some other provisions. So we'll just go back to the LC district and the UDO to cover everything else that may or may not be missing, so. Thank you. Any questions? We certainly happy to answer them. We do have one of the owners here, Dave Jacobson, the owner of 850 Pappas Drive, who is here for any questions, too.
And I was wondering if any other members of the audience wanted to make comments, presentation about this topic? Wonder if fellow commissioners have comments, questions?
How'd you come up with the permitted use list?
It came from the... We looked at the light commercial district and the neighborhood commercial, but mostly from the light commercial district, which is the most... If you look at the zoning map, that's the one most designated out in that area. So we went off that list, and this... Wasn't many changes from that. We took a few uses off that weren't probably going to be able to be located there, and moved one special use to a permitted use, expanded a couple of existing permitted uses. But for the most part, it matches the LC district.
Mr. Olson, you may have mentioned this as well, but just as a reminder to this commission that there is the Annie Glynn North effort going on right now by the city in paying special attention to this area. And I'm wondering if, I don't know if you want to add any more to the overall idea that, I mean, this is a place that, you know, may help? And wondering how this amendment may help or contribute positively either now or in the future for this effort right now that is going on.
Yeah, going forward, this area is, you know, continued to be indicated as a commercial use. There could be some improvements, perhaps, in the area from recommendations from the plan coming forward. One of the recommendations or uses kind of mentioned needed out there was the medical clinic, so we took a look at that, and from one of the owners added that as a permitted use. There's currently medical offices are permitted, but we want to make sure medical clinics were permitted, too. So kind of gauge what uses have been discussed out there. And I think for the most part, what's been proposed or needed out there are within this use list of either permitted or special, so.
And certainly, this is not... I mean, this is something that can be revised in the future.
Sure.
That's not our goal, to be revising and revising, but certainly...
Yeah. And again, this applies just to those three lots, so. But right, the future owner could come in and propose an amendment in the future to add a use or if they desire.
Makes sense.
And that'll go through a public hearing and commission review and council action.
Makes sense. With that, I was wondering if there is anybody else from the public wants to make any comments on this topic and/or whether the commissioners want to make any additional comments or ask questions? If not, I'm going to note that the time is 6:29, and I'm going to close the public hearing. I just want to make it explicit that I made a note to myself that we started the public hearing at 6:21. I didn't say it at that time. With that, I want to know if there are any other comments or questions from the commissioners regarding this topic? If not, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
The sample motion's in the staff report.
I get to read it this time.
Very good.
It's a little shorter than the other one.
That's why I chose this one. Based upon the submitted petition and testimony presented, I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to the City Council approval and amendment to Plan Development Ordinance 96-33 to add permitted and special uses to the property located at 850, 890, and 930 Pappas Drive, per the attached list indicated on Exhibit A, and that language be added to the ordinance, that the LC light commercial district regulations in the current UDO be used if not covered in the ordinance.
Second. Motion by Buckley and second by Wright. Could I have a roll call, please? Could I have a roll call, please?
Katharina Barbie?
Yes.
Vicky Buckley?
Yes.
David Castro?
Yes.
Matthew Crowell? Deborah Neer? Jerry Wright?
Yes.
Chair Christina Atherton. Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Thank you. With that, move on to item G, reports.
Yes, our next meeting is May 9th. We do have one hearing we've scheduled. The Pizza Hut at 701 West Lincoln Highway, Lincoln Highway and Carroll Avenue by the University is proposing to rezone the property. They intend to demo the building and put up a new commercial building that will also include a Pizza Hut restaurant, much smaller. Will have some seating and then the space for two other retail, commercial-type uses. So, they're requesting rezoning to plan development to accommodate some waivers in the ordinance. But that hearing has just been set for the 9th of May. We may have an additional item on there too, which hasn't been scheduled yet. But then, the previous council meeting on April 9th, they did approve the Founder's Elementary School special use permit for their parking lot that was approved by the council. The last meeting, I know that Chair Atherton had a question regarding a number of times we could continue a public hearing if there was anything in the UDO or bylaws. I didn't find anything. I think we want to... It's up to the commission if you want to do anything, but it does leave the flexibility of continuing in cases where we need to do that. And the commission always has the option, authority to either approve or deny something and not to continue it. So, unless there's any direction, I think we'll just keep, you know... There's no regulations currently, so I'm not really proposing any unless there's some direction by the commission.
It's in our hands. Thank you very much. With that, I will be happy to entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Wright and second by Barbie. Can I... Can I have a roll call for that?
No.
No.
Voice vote.
Voice vote. So, whoever's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign for those not in favor. All right. adjourn.
Somebody ever seen a voice vote?
You never know.
You never know. I know, they're kind of honoring.
Yeah.